I'm going to call this meeting, joint meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board, to order. Ms. Serza, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Emanuel. Mr. Fuentes.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
And Mrs. Cardasco and Dr. Prater are absent.
Mrs. Cardasco, I believe, will be joining us. She's at a school meeting down the hall, so, thank you. Ms. Jones.
And I call to order this meeting at the James City County Board of Supervisors for the purpose of a work session. Mr. Powell, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Mr. McGlynn.
Here.
Ms. Anisuk.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Ms. Miller, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson.
Here.
Mr. Mons.
Here.
Vice Mayor Finley.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Here.
Thank you all very much for coming today. We appreciate it. With that, we're going to start out. The first thing on our agenda is 2.01 FY 2015 Operating Budget. Dr. Constantino.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here today. We know that we worked very hard to find a time. We appreciate you coming in today. We also know that we have a kind of a time constraint because the supervisors do have meetings scheduled for this afternoon, so, to respect those constraints we have this afternoon, we are going to dispense, in previous years, we have given you a fairly lengthy academic overview. We're proposing to do that later, at another time, at the time of your convenience. We're happy to do that whenever you'd like, and we'll suggest some things to you as the spring goes on. We have much to share with regards to academics, but decided that today's time was better used to discuss important financial matters before us. Our focus today will be directed to the proposed FY 2015 operating budget for the school division, as well as the proposed capital improvement expenditures plan. The majority of our time, with regard to the CIP, should center on the middle school and central office decision. To both remind longstanding members of the council, supervisors, and school board, and to assist those who are relatively new, we will take some time today to review the timeline of activities and events associated with the middle school and central office. We have prepared a set of documents that will be referenced when we discuss the timeline. It's my hope today, and goal today, that we would achieve some consensus on how to proceed with these projects. I'm hopeful that the school board will be able to adopt a budget at their March 18th meeting, and then that budget will be forwarded to both city and the county by the deadlines established. At their most recent meeting, I proposed options for the middle school based on the facts and information available to the school division at that time. Both of those options will be discussed with you today. I know that most of you know our chief financial officer, but I wanted to reintroduce you to her again today, since she will lead a great deal of the information sharing with you. Teri Stone came to Williamsburg James City County Schools in July 2013. Ms. Stone is a certified public accountant, has extensive experience working in finance both at the county level, and most recently at the school division level in Hanover County, from where she came to join us last year. Ms. Stone is also unique perspective, both a former school board member, having served for many years in her home county, as well as a sitting member of her county supervisors. All of these experiences and perspectives serve her and our school system very well as we navigate through some very challenging financial time. Teri will begin this afternoon with an overview of the operating budget proposal, followed by the CIP with an in-depth review of the steps taken so far with regard to the middle school and central office. Our plan is to allow the boards ample time to ask questions, and more importantly, discuss this particular issue, and to give some guidance on the direction of these projects. Again, I want to thank you for your time, and I'll ask Teri to start us off with the operating budget, and certainly, it goes without saying, whenever you have questions, feel free to ask those. Teri?
Good afternoon, school board members, board of supervisors, and council members. It's a pleasure to be here today, and I'm not sure, I think I drew those short straws, so I'm going to be here for a while, but just starting out, we'll take a look at our operating budget. You have a green folder in front of you with a good number of documents, and as we hit on slides that have documents that are included in the folder, I'll try to highlight that, just so that you'll know where it is within the folder. Getting started, our proposed operating budget, does, the superintendent's proposed budget, does assume a local revenue increase of $1.5 million, or 1.9 percent. If we include the state local sales tax with that, it's a total of $1.7 million, or a 2 percent increase. The state revenue has, reflects an increase of $3.8 million, or 13.8 percent, excluding the state sales tax, and that is based upon the governor's introduced budget. Other revenue has a slight increase, and that includes things such, some federal revenues and other miscellaneous. Just the operating budget at a glance, this gives some key figures. You see enrollment, the projection that's being used to, to develop the proposed budget, has an enrollment of 11,131. That's an increase of 220 students from the current year budget, or 2 percent. The operating budget overall is increasing by 5.6 million, or 4.8 percent, and the FTEs are increasing by 23, or 1.5 percent. The per pupil expenditure, and this does exclude pre-K and adult education, is increasing by $292 to $10,575, and that's a 2.8 percent increase. Also, below there, what we wanted to include here are the non-negotiable expenditures, and we're going to talk about those in a later slide, but you can see that in terms of non-negotiable increases, that totaled 3.5 million, and if we compare that to the current year budget, that alone is a 2 percent increase. Also, staffing, or based upon the enrollment, when we look at the new projected enrollment, we have to staff the classrooms accordingly, and that reflected an increase of 16 teachers, or $1.2 million, which, again, would reflect a 1 percent increase by itself, based upon the current year budget. Yes? 3 percent for non-negotiable, correct. Thank you. Thank you. What's on the slide is correct. So, when we look at operating revenue overall, you can see that local revenue reflects 64.1 percent of the total budget, and then state sales tax is another 9.6 percent. When you add the two of those together for a total local support, it's 73.7 percent. The other revenues include the state funding at 25.7 percent, and then those small other revenues that are less than 1 percent. Now returning to expenditures, and first, when we start at the budget, we look at our decreases. We had base bus, base budget reductions of over $700,000. This is primarily related to attrition, hiring in new employees at a lower salary than the ones that left us, whether it be retirement, so that was primarily made up that number. Also, we have the final phase-out, or the elimination of the LPN program is reflected. We had a reduction in legal expenditures, and that's related upon the trend that we've seen in recent years, and then some other line item reductions that included substitute cost and overtime cost. In regards to our operating budget expenditures, this does not reflect all changes, but our budget document does detail all changes from the fiscal year 2014 to 2015, but this really touches on the more material ones. Non-negotiable increases that we spoke about in the beginning of the presentation, the 3.5 million, VRS rate, the teacher pool rate increase, as we've all read about in the paper, made up 1.8 million of that increase, so a rather significant piece of that. Health insurance, based upon an 8.3 percent increase that we've received from our plan administrator, is increasing by $1.2 million, and then we also are adding an ESL teacher, as required by the SOQs. I mentioned earlier with the increasing enrollment, based upon our staffing ratios, this budget includes 16 additional classroom teachers, at a cost of $1.2 million. And then we also have a 3.4, 3.42 percent salary increase to complete the implementation of the employee, assuming the 5 percent of the VRS deduction. And that helps us with recruitment, in regards to looking at our starting salary, because if some of the jurisdictions around us have fully completed that implementation of the 5 percent, their starting salary appears to be higher than ours. We were mandated to allow, to include at least one more year of that phase-in, which would have been the 1.42 percent, out of costs of $212,000. The proposed budget also includes a 1 percent wage increase, out of costs $823,000, and then an initiative for alternative education at $300,000. Yes, ma'am.
What is the $300,000? What is the alternative education?
Sure. I'm going to ask Dr. Constantino to speak to that.
We have been, when I arrived here in 2011, we were transitioning from a program, the ALL program, to a program of student advancement coaches, and we have been monitoring that program over the past few years, determining whether or not it is, it is meeting our needs. And while it meets our needs in some areas, we need to do something to provide differentiation in academic environments for kids who need it. So, we're asking the board to earmark monies for us to create an alternative education pilot, so that we can better meet the needs of, and I don't really like the word "alternative," I wish there was a better word, I don't really like the word "at risk," but students who, for whatever reason, are not successful, as successful as we want them to be in what I would consider a traditional school day. So, we're looking at options of altering those days, looking at evening options, looking at blended learning models, and regardless of what we do, it will cost us some money. So, we've, we've put that in there to expand and build upon what we have already, because we need to.
Thank you.
If I may ask also, I noticed in the report, there are proposed 23 full-time, new full-time positions, 16 are classroom teachers specifically, that are identified in here, and I was just wondering what the other positions were for.
Sure, and within our budget document, we actually have, we list out all of those positions. We have included a position in human resources. If I may, I'm going to grab that document just a second.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, so we have 16 teaching positions based upon our enrollment. Also, formerly, we had three athletic trainers that were included in the teacher allocation for high schools, so when we calculated the teacher allocation, we would include an athletic trainer, but clearly, they're not an instructional position. So, part of this year's budget, we removed those from the instructional count, so that's an addition of three instructional positions to make up for that difference. And then, we had a, let me jump down a bit, we have a new technology position that's included in the budget, and a part-time human resources position that's included in the budget, and, let's see, I may be, and then the SOQ teacher, the ESL teacher that's required by SOQ. Not sure if I did well with my counting in my head, but I think I've got close.
If I may, just for a moment, I just realized that we have a little "education-yze" going on here. ESL is English as a Second Language, and that teacher would be focused on those students for whom English is not a first language, which is a growing population in the school division, which is why the SOQ then requires us to have the position.
Okay, so next, looking at our operating budget, this slide actually breaks down the expenditures by function, and as you can see, 74.4 percent of the total budget is an instruction. We have 4.2 percent at the top of the slide in technology, 9.2 is in operations and maintenance, another 6.4 in transportation, 2.3 percent in administration, and 3.6 is student health and attendance. And these functional categories are really dictated by the Department of Education, and how we report our expenditures back to them at the end of the year. So, that is really a quick overview of the operating budget, and of course, the entire budget can be found on our website, along with all the presentations that we have made to date. So, any questions related to that? Okay, well, I will continue. Next, we'll take a look at the proposed capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan continues our standard refurbishment and replacement cycle, and what that is, is 15 years for a facility, and 25 years for a roof. It includes this year, new, a school bus replacement plan, and that's based upon, it's age-based, based upon 15 years of service. We look at smoothing out those purchases, and continuing that plan, so that basically, we can replace the buses as, as they're, again, 15 years old. It includes a Berkeley baseball field refurbishment at $82,000, a fourth middle school that starts with design in fiscal year 2015, and construction in fiscal year 2016, and as Dr. Constantino mentioned, we now have an option A and B that we will share with you today, and also, a new central office facility for fiscal year 2015. We're going to go through the last two projects in more detail. Looking at the fourth middle school, basically, this is just a recap of some of the things that have occurred to date, and there are copies of most all of these reports within your folder, primarily on the right-hand side of the folder. So, in June of 2013, there was a final, the middle school committee had a final report that went to the school board, and there is a copy of that report in your folder. In September of 2013, there was a feasibility study that was presented to the school board based upon modernization versus new construction at the site of a middle school, and a copy of that is in your folder. In October of 2013, the city and county planning staff did attend a school board meeting and presented some information in regards to planning initiatives, and, you know, and some information on the comprehensive plan at that time. Also, in November of 2013, we received our enrollment projections, which is a report that's prepared annually by Future Think, and a summary of that information with five years of projections is included in your folder. And then, as requested by the school board, from December of 2013 to February 2014, the staff, planning, and other staff members' finance of the county, the city, and the school board worked together, basically, to take those future enrollment numbers, and try to put those on a map in regards to where we would expect the future middle school students. And based upon that work, we have this map, and on the left-hand side of your folder, behind the option A and B, you will find a copy of this map, maybe easier to read. And working, again, with the planning staff, what they did was they took that projected enrollment report, and looked at the number over the next 10 years, how many additional middle school students were expected, which was 578. And then, based upon known developments within the county, they tried to plot where we could potentially estimate those students to be. And again, this is not a perfect science, this is more of a judgment-based, as, as opposed to a factual exercise. And then, based upon that, they, the new, the known development students, there was a 184 that they plotted on this map, and you see the blue circles, and that represents where they think, where they expect that the students will be, the future students will be. The larger the circle identifies a greater number of students, and then there's a number with that circle that suggests that that's the number that's expected to move within that area. Based upon this exercise, they determined that for the new, for the known development, I apologize, for the known development students of 184, they expect that 65 percent of those will be within the primary service area, which is the oval. And then, if you look at the bottom left-hand side of that map, you'll see that there's a note, and the remaining 296 middle student, middle school students, they expect to come from either by right or future development, and they note there that they anticipate that 75 percent of those students will, again, be within that oval or the primary service area. Any questions about that? So, based upon that exercise, the outcome was that 70 percent of the future middle school students are projected to be within the primary service area, or 406 of the 578 students. So, the mapping exercise indicated that the future middle school site should be centrally located, and that clearly, James Blair is centrally located, and does not require any land purchase. So, based upon that information that was received, we have an option A and an option B for the fourth middle school. Option A is for a 21st century learning facility for 950 students, located at James Blair site, and then there are two alternatives at this site, to either have a modernization and renovation of the existing facility, which is a cost of $37.3 million, or new construction of a 950-student facility at this site for $40.2 million. And the, you'll see that those dollar values are fairly close to one another, so we noted there that only 34,000 square feet, or 28.3 percent of this facility can be modernized. The remaining amount would need to be demolished and reconstructed. Based upon that, the school would have an opening date of September of 2018, and within your folder, on the left-hand side, you have a timeline and a graph for both of these options. The second option is to have, again, a 21st century learning facility for 650 students. We have an estimated cost there for modernization or renovation of the facility at $28 million, or new construction at $31 million. The school opening, which, of course, there's a timeline for the, for you to follow, would be September of 2018, the initial opening, the same date, but then, this site, or this facility would have a future expansion capability. So, a phased-in approach with the ability to expand to 925 or 950 students in the future, and your timeline reflects how that would be phased in. Looking at the cost associated with that, the, in trying to estimate what a future cost would be, which, of course, we know is difficult, but the, the September '24 cost of the expansion today is estimated at $12.5 million. And we have received, we have worked with an engineer to provide us with some non-bonding preliminary numbers, so I don't want you to think that the geeky CPA is making up all of these numbers. I've, I've had some assistance. What we have here are any questions regards to those two options?
Yes. The prior numbers given for the acreage needed for middle school are far different than what Blair site offers. Can you explain that difference, and why we've gone backwards in saying that now it's an acceptable site?
Sure, and I actually have a slide in my miscellaneous, but...
The only one you own.
Let's see if I can get to the...
It's the only one you use, okay.
Well? Maybe, go back, jump. I thought, you know what, I have that in a future slide with central office. May I come back to you?
Certainly.
I can give you a little bit of information. The state recommends, and I think you have to understand that the word is "recommend." There is no fast and hard rule about the number of acres upon which a school will be built, and the state will pretty much issue any kind of a waiver if you're going to build a school on a significantly small or significantly large piece of land, be that as it may. The common practice is to assume that 30 acres is appropriate for a middle school. I believe the county comprehensive plan calls for 38 acres, but 30 acres would be recommended by the state. This property, including Cooley Field, would be 25 acres, so yes, it would be slightly smaller than the 30, but we have, we have some preliminary information from engineers and architects that we could position a building, and, and basically do what we needed to get done on this property. And of course, we've been focused on this property, as I just whispered to Mr. Kennedy, because this is the property that is owned at the present time.
Thank you. Now, what's, this graph shows our future capacity mapped out by level. Again, the purple line represents 100 percent capacity, and we're using the Future Think, Future Enrollment numbers, and the blue line represents the projected elementary enrollment, the red line represents the projected middle school enrollment, and the yellow line represents the projected high school enrollment, in terms of its percent of capacity, understanding that the purple line is 100 percent capacity. We then wanted to compare the middle school line to the two options that were provided to you today. So, again, the red represents the current middle school capacity, as compared to projected enrollment, and then, the yellow line represents option A, or building a 950-student facility. You can see that when we get to the end of the 10-year projection, we are at 88.7 percent of total middle school capacity at that time. If we were to choose option B, a 650-student capacity facility, then at the end of the projected enrollment period, 2023-24, we would be at 97 percent of capacity. So, that is all that I have in regards to the middle school project. I would be happy to take any questions before we move on to central office, or we can...
Now, you show the increased enrollment in the high schools. I know this is very forward-looking, but do we have expansion opportunities with our existing high schools, or are we going to be looking at a, another significant new project in the future?
And I see at the end of the 10-year period, we're at 107.5 percent of our capacity. The current year capital improvement plan does not include another high school facility, but certainly, and I would say that when you look at these projections, when you look out five years, you can be, they're fairly reliable, and a certain level of confidence. As you get out 10 years, that confidence starts to wane a bit, so that is something that we will continue to monitor as we move closer, certainly.
I guess my question was more, we're looking at a new middle school that we may be able to build smaller and expand. Can our current high schools expand? Like, can they physically expand?
Can they? I am unsure of that. Do you know if our high schools have the capability for expansion at this time?
I believe that, I don't have an architect, I don't have a signature, but I believe that there is some capacity to expand at least two of the schools. I would, I say that cautiously, and without a piece of data to back it up, but I believe that's the case.
I would say, as I recall, War Hill was designed, the central, the, the main core was designed larger than usual, in order to accommodate future expansion, because we're, we had, we've had challenges, is you have the main core corridors and cafeteria services restricted, even if you had land to expand on, because of the, because of those size limitations. And if I do recall, the War Hill did have that expansion in there.
Which is, I think you're right. I just used the caveat that, I don't have that document in front of me, but I, that, that's how I remembered as well.
In 2001, we did a, I believe it was '01, John, you and I were on the board together then. I know we had some studies done. They actually even said Lafayette could be theoretically expanded. It had some difficulties with parking and such, but there was potential there. I don't know if Lafayette's core was built bigger in the renovation or not, but both high schools at the time had the ability to grow. But we've been down this road, we're for capacity, size, and it's constantly changing, as my 12 years here has shown me, so.
Following up on capacity and expansion opportunities in the middle school, what analysis have we done to determine whether or not we could avoid having to build a fourth middle school by expanding the three current middle schools? You know, using Berkeley as an example, could we not build a new cafeteria, and the kitchen services, and then renovate the existing space for classrooms, and then rework the bussing?
I know that that was an option that was considered by the middle school committee, and I actually, there were several options that the middle school committee considered when they met, so, let's see if I can get to the right, I'm not doing well with this, am I? But the middle school committee, again, was initiated in February of 2013. They had a final report, that final report is on our website, and what they con... And what they considered at the time was they looked at additions, modernization, new facilities, the James Blair site, and they went into all of that in great detail. Unfortunately, I wasn't here at the time. But based upon that, their final recommendation was a fourth middle school on this site. And Dr. Constantino, you may have more details than I do.
Well, you know, two years ago, if you remember, when we met and I first launched the notion of a new middle school, I talked about the need for 21st century learning facilities. And I haven't backed off of that need. I think that education is fundamentally changing. And the decision that we make, you've heard me say this 100 times, is a decision we're going to live with for 40 or 50 years. And so, I think the committee took into consideration, you know, is it, can you build wings on buildings? Sure you can. You still have a double-loaded corridor, you still have classrooms that were designed, in some cases, many years ago. And it, will it meet the needs of future? And so, what we did, what the committee did, not we, was took into consideration programmatic needs of schools. Where are schools going in the future? What's happening? How has the role of technology changed education? And we also took into consideration numerous school designs of schools that are being built, one in Gloucester, a couple in Virginia Beach, and others. And the committee came back and said, if we're going to do this, let's do it right. The message that I've received since my arrival is that, you know, we are, we're doing everything in our power to create a premier school system. And a premier school system, in my opinion, and I will certainly qualify it by saying it's my recommendation, is that we create a structure that we know can be flexible and adaptable for the future. But the short answer to your question is yes. That was all looked at, and that report contains the information that's there and ultimately why the committee bypassed that recommendation and made the ones they made.
I think we all agree we want a premier school system. And I think our community is willing to make those investments, but what those investments turn out to be in total, when you consider having to build a new administration office and where that's going to be, acquiring new land, are the, so I just asked the question, maybe just with a second look at, that is there other opportunities to expand our current middle schools and start to have them evolve into the 21st century modern learning facilities? I don't know.
My understanding is that all three, all three middle schools presently online are expandable. Again, I don't, I'd have to double-check and make sure I'm right. But yeah, that certainly was an option that was considered by the committee. You're right.
I think Councilman Bonds raises an excellent question. And I just wanted to share what I'm hearing from families that have children in the school system, and yes, they want a premier school system, but they're also concerned if we can expand our capacity with the current facilities that we have and to achieve, and still achieve a high level of education, that is certainly a more affordable way to go. Because when you have families, even if they have one or four children in the school systems, they're having to put out of pocket a lot for activities. And so, and I'm sharing just concerns that have been raised to me by families is, you know, they're putting out of pocket for sports and so on, and then now we're talking about building a brand-new facility. And I think it's important that we recognize that it's what is in the classroom and the quality of the teaching is, from what I'm hearing from citizens, it is more important than what the facility looks like. And so, I think just out of, the citizens have brought this to me, if there's a way for us to accommodate our increasing student population, but do so with our existing facilities, many would be supportive of going in that route. I also understand the constraints that you all are dealing with.
You're absolutely right, that the single most effective variable in education is the quality of the teacher in the classroom. There's no question about that. Every piece of research supports that. The effectiveness of that teacher with a changing population of students and a changing demographic of students, as well as education itself changing, forces me as superintendent to make sure that I consider in what environments teachers will thrive. And I think that becomes the question. And, you know, anything, I suppose, can be renovated. But I would not, I'd be remiss if I were to answer your question by saying, putting on an addition would meet a 21st century requirement. I don't think that's a fair statement. I think putting on an addition and renovating and rethinking and redesigning the middle schools so that they were conducive to what we need for the next number of years, certainly that can be, that can be reviewed. But what was considered by the committee were additions, I think as we all know them to be traditionally, and why they thought that moving in another direction was...
I think we have a couple of other, like, for instance, Hornsby, we elected to do a geothermal system. That geothermal system does save quite a bit of money in terms of what it costs to heat and cool the building. However, it does have a limited capacity in terms of expansion. So, it's never simple. And, you know, to speak to the question that you had about how big we need to have the campus be, I think, again, we're making a concession when we look at that. As all of you can see, it was, there was not a tremendous amount of area to park, or you don't get really a spacious feeling when you come into this area. And it's my understanding that there's even going to be an adjustment to the road that might make that a little bit more challenging. And yet, it's the land that we own and that we could easily build on. So, the question we need to ask, I think, in every circumstance is, can we do it? Yes. Is it the best thing to do? I don't know. And can we afford it? And those are all very, very important pieces that have to be considered. And I would even bring it back to another issue that was on the page. For instance, we are looking at replacing very old school buses. Well, that doesn't even get us to where we need to be, because we have not as much participation in some of our programs that we fund, such as New Horizons and Governor's School, because we have to bring the kids to a central location, which means that as early as high school starts, they've got to get up earlier to get to where we're going. And so, there's, you know, there's something to be said for every piece that you add or subtract, there is a cost to that. And, you know, I'm, you know, as you know, always very concerned about how much things cost. And so, I'm not advocating for any particular thing, but I want to say, I think what we're here to talk about today is really the big picture and what we want to look at going forward, because it is a decision we're going to have to live with for a number of years.
I guess one of my concerns has been, from the start of this, we've had 25 changes to the council, to the board, to the school board, to the senior staff, 25 different people here since Bruce Goodson first pitched this idea. So, we've changed over quite a bit. We went from renovating Blair, which at the time, everyone who was sitting around this table thought it was a good idea, to now starting essentially from scratch and doing something new, which I'm not saying one is right over the other, but we've had a lot of moving parts. So, the question that I hear most often is why? Why can't we reuse Blair? So, that's the question I'm being asked by citizens. What would it take to retrofit it? The limitations in retrofit, which I really don't know. I know you have challenges with ADA and some others. The site itself, we've heard, you know, two stories, now we can use it, certainly appreciate that. Cooley Field at one point, I don't believe, was factored into the equation of the number of acreage. Now it is. So, we've had a lot of change. So, the questions, I think, are fair. And I think that there's a lot out there that citizens would like to know and that people want to know. And it's been very generic up to now, at least in my opinion, the information that we've had forthcoming. You're just introducing a lot of this to us today. So, please excuse me if I'm asking some questions that you folks may feel to be redundant, but it's almost as if we're starting over again. When we first went into this and we decided to close Blair for financial reasons going into the Great Recession, everyone was working together on this towards a common goal. Not saying that we're still not, but certainly the plans have changed. So, instead of retrofitting, which we thought wouldn't run into that much money, now we're looking at essentially the cost being the same. So, there's certainly some questions. How can it be the same? How did he come to that conclusion? So, you know what we're going to be asked as fiscal agents. I'm sure all of you watched our meeting with Davenport. We are stretched out at debt capacity. And certainly, that's something that we look at and everyone looks at. We want a premier school system, no doubt. But the questions that I think are being asked are very fair.
And Dr. Constantino, you had mentioned the expansion of our existing school systems would not fit in with the 21st century learning facility ideal. Can you tell us a little bit about that and how it is significantly different than what we already have in our system?
I can. And I can provide you more information as well from previous presentations. To try to encapsulate this in a very concise answer, schools have been traditionally, have been designed basically the same way since the early 1900s. And the design is called a double-loaded corridor. It's a hallway with classrooms on both sides. Those classrooms are primarily square cubes. It's been that way for a long time. The thinking and programmatic thinking in research and education and the building of new buildings suggests that the biggest change in education that has occurred in the last 10 years is standards-based education. It's not an education system that many of us around this table perhaps went through. The standards of learning, and you've heard about Common Core standards around the rest of the country, Virginia doesn't subscribe to that, but we do have the standards of learning, suggest mastery and moving on when ready. And so, when you have students who have to master a concept before they can move on to the next concept, it then opens the door to having the need to continuously flexibly, have flexibility to change student groupings, almost on a daily or weekly basis, based on what they have mastered or not mastered. So, the designs of schools are going more toward flexibility, less concrete block walls, and more opportunity for teachers to say, if two teachers have 30 students in their classrooms, and today they want to take 35 of them one place and 25 of them another, or even 10 to one place, they would have that opportunity to do that. And a couple of years ago, and throughout this, I have put up some renderings of some designs that have been created in schools in Virginia. The most recent design that I just saw was the new middle school in Gloucester, which has also taken this approach of having this opportunity for flexible learning space so that we can meet the needs, whatever they might be, of kids now and in the future. And so, the thinking is, is that the double-loaded corridor concept is not a concept that is going to continue to serve us well as we go in, as education continues to evolve. And it's, as you read every day, it evolves pretty rapidly. I think that's the answer in a nutshell. You know, I can certainly provide you a lot more detailed information and point to a lot of, a lot of writing and a lot of thinking about what schools should look like and what schools are becoming now. The new Kellam High School in Virginia Beach, for example, I just referenced the school in Gloucester. Both of those schools have embraced a concept of making sure that we don't build ourselves into a block, that we have flexibility for learning design and programmatic design now and in the future. STEM education, for example, if we wanted to run specialty programs in schools, STEM education would require that we have some attention paid to how we use the space and the flexibility of that space. So, what we've tried to do is to project into a future to the best of our ability and try to meet those needs, try to meet the needs of those kids. So, that's a, kind of across-the-treetop answer to that question. We certainly can provide you more information.
Just let me, while I have this thought, I think what Dr. Constantino has tried to do and what the committee tried to do was to forward think and to look 50 years, you know, what's going to serve us? Now, if we want to, you know, we can't just go into Berkeley and add a wing. We have small hallways. So, you're looking at probably a complete change there. I mean, there's a lot, it's not just adding on. Tuano, for example, I don't know if any of you have attended a play out there, you know, the auditorium there is, it looks pretty much for a theater for a preschool. I mean, it's very, very small. So, it's not just, you know, if we're going to add capacity and we're going to say, okay, well, right now, we don't want to do this, we want to just try to find some seats and put our vision on the back burner, then, okay, that's a decision that we need to have and we need to move forward with that. So, we're really at a crossroads here, and we need to know what you all are thinking and how we need to proceed. Because if it isn't that we want to build a fourth middle school that has the vision that Dr. Constantino is talking about and one that the school board is talking about as well, then we need to go back and we need to talk about, okay, we're going to add on to these three buildings and, or we're going to, you know, what can we do to retrofit Blair, which is firewalls, things that, quite frankly, we did not know when the decision was made to close this building. And I do want to speak, you know, as far as this information just coming today, I have to say that I know that Dr. Constantino is constantly in communication with, he was in with Mr. Midow, with Mr. Powell, with Mr. Tuttle. We have tried, we have sat down with the city and county at every turn to make sure that we were getting all of the information out, because we want to work with you all. I mean, we, that is why this meeting is so important, so that we can move forward with some decisions that are going to have an impact. We are a growing school division. Every day I get my school board news, and every day there are divisions that are closing schools due to lack of enrollment. And we are, we are a place where people want to come and they want to put their children in our schools. And I think that speaks volumes of our community. And so, I would like to see us continue to support that. Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the document that's in your packet, it's talking about the fourth middle school modernization, new construction, and feasibility. The person who came from HBA the evening gave an extensive and almost tedious report on this building and the struggles of this building and the cost of renovating as opposed to the cost of rebuilding or building anew. And as you saw on the slide, the difference between the two was, you know, like 2.5 million or less to get new construction, which would meet energy efficiencies as opposed to try and attack on new construction to a renovated portion of this building, you know, presents an architectural and energy challenge.
Couple of other questions and statements. One is, the problem of vision is everybody has a different vision. I mean, we've seen it through the years. What's the right size? Is it bigger? Is it smaller? We've adjusted to that. Each superintendent that comes in, administrator, everybody's got a vision. I certainly appreciate it. Everything changes. I've seen a lot of changes in the number of years I've been sitting here. Some of you have sat here much longer, and you've seen the changes as well. We do have 133 acres in Tuano, in Stonehouse, of which 113 is developable. We realize population is here, at least I do. That's what I'm looking at. I don't know if this was factored into any discussion at all, is the Tuano sites out in Stonehouse, which were proffered to us in 2007. 113 acres, like I said, is developable. It does require some expansion of water lines, roads, and whatnot. Are we looking at, and what's the difference here? And what we used to hear in the past from members of the school board was, the difference in schools. If we build something today which is visionary, what does that mean for all of the other schools? And, you know, where do we go there? Because we always have this balance where we talk about fundamental fairness. So, if we get into this, what is that saying for everything else moving forward? Are we looking at retrofits in other areas, or is that something that we deal with as time goes on?
That's a very fair and very important question. And the answer is, yeah, we're going to have to, we're going to have to rethink the future when we look at refurbishments, when we look at replacements, when, you know, I think that we need to, we need to look at refurbishment more than carpet and tile. We need to look at the space that kids, that we're asking kids to learn in, the space that we're asking kids, teachers to teach in, and within reason, within our financial reasons, say, what can we do to improve that, to bring equity across the division? I also think we're very lucky inasmuch as we have a number of buildings that are already pretty close to that. I think we can point to a lot of opportunity for flexibility and design at War Hill. We can look to some of those designs at Hornsby and even Matoka. And so, we've already made a commitment, in my opinion, to looking at some differentiation in the way we design schools. My thinking is that we just need to continue that commitment as things change and evolve. And so, I appreciate the question, because I think it's an important question. And it's also one that we have discussed as leaders of the three groups in terms of equity, because it's an important, it's an important issue. And we do understand that building, if we do build a new school and it's built to 21st century standards, that we have to go back and make sure that as we renovate and as we look at future CIPs and planning, that we do the best we can to bring that about in the other schools. So, thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
And jumping off from Mrs. Larson's points earlier, you know, expansions of schools aren't free. And so, if we were to expand three schools, you know, to get it to additional capacity of 800 at three different places... get, to get it additional capacity of 800 at three different places, those, those, those expansions, those construction costs, as well as the infrastructure changes, are likely to cost at least equal, maybe even more, after we make those changes. So I don't know that that's, you know, that's really, if we're looking out for taxpayer dollars, that's really going to be the answer to that question, because, you know, three different sets of infrastructure improvements, it's going to, it's going to be expensive.
Well, looking at your needs, though, and, and listening to you talk about alt, and talk about arts education, I, I don't know what you'd call it anymore, shop, auto shop, things along those lines, I, I don't know what the phrase is for it anymore. Aren't we getting to be a school system where one size no longer fits all? Have you discussed differences in schools, where you have a school that specializes in the arts, one that may be in the sciences, math? Is this something that we're moving towards, or are we still doing everything and trying to make up for the kids that have to go to Newport News, which is where I get a big complaint from a lot of parents who want their kids to go down to Newport News for VOTAC, and it's prohibitive for them cost-wise to bring them. The bus trip is grossly unfair to those kids to go down there. We talk about special needs kids or, or discipline, or kids who just don't learn like other kids do. They need opportunities as well. Are, are we, has any of that been discussed in these schools?
Yes. If, if you watch any of our meetings, which I know keep you, your meetings keep you busy, one of the things that's happening is that Butler Farm Road, we are building a new special education facility in conjunction with the other localities that are there, which will then allow us to retrofit that building to allow more of the, which we don't use the word VOTAC anymore, 21st century career-ready is what we're, we're looking at. Many of those programs will move to the, to the campus on Woodside. So coming from Butler Farm to Woodside is significantly closer in, in terms of what's there. But that goes to my point of the buses, because everything is connected, and so one of the things we have talked about, to your point with regard to specialty, and, and by the way, I'll interrupt myself and say that I moved here from Hampton. Hampton did a remarkable job of offering a number of different programs. They had a chef program, they had a robotics program, they had robust participation in both the Governor's School and New Horizons. Now, they had some challenges as to getting to people to want to move into their system, and so, so they did that. And I would, I would suggest to you that I'm not sure that I would use the word equity, because I think that one of the things that makes us in this country different is that we allow people to make, to self-select and to make choices. And so what we want to do is offer choices, and yes, we have talked about reclaiming some of the arts programs, yes, we've talked about expanding the IV program all the way up from middle school to high school, yes, we've talked about a STEM, STEM program, because we're very aware that in order to have a premier system, we have to offer choices and, and allow people to self-select. And I'll also direct you back, and I certainly appreciate your history and everything that you have observed along the way. But one of the things that's made what our board has done very, very different is that we have a strategic plan, and we are working specifically to each, each point on that strategic plan, and one of our main emphasis is 21st century career readiness. We are the first school system in America that has been adopted by the Association for Manufacturers Excellence and has completed American Quality Control and Education Project, which is, was represented by one of those slides up there as some money that was saved, and we simply looked at three areas this year, which is paper usage, overtime, and stipends. It's essentially a process management system that you wouldn't necessarily expect educators to be schooled in, and as they're getting that information, they're applying it, and we're, we're determining new efficiencies in our system. So, you know, like, like Ruth said, we have a decision to make, and it, it very well may be that we get, we can't make that decision right now, but as Mr. Kelly has referenced, it's not an easy decision, we're not going to just say, oh, we're going to renovate and add, because, you know, one of the things we haven't talked about is technology bandwidth and, and other things that go along with really being able to use what is available in the market. We're investing more in online learning, we're doing a lot of different things, and so those are all factors that we probably didn't consider when, when Blair was being closed, and, you know, that we want to move forward in. And, I mean, trust me, I absolutely take seriously every penny that is, is spent, and I, I don't want to just cavalierly say, well, let's, you know, introduce more debt, and I think that's why we've been very sensitive to the timeline in terms of how, how and when the debt is going to be restructured. I take pride in the fact that we are a AAA bond-rated county, and I want it, I want us to stay that way. And, you know, just as you've had and are still grappling with storm runner issues, things that are brought to you that you don't have a choice about, we have the same thing with the retirement system. I mean, that's a big chunk of the money that we're asking for this year, and so, you know, I, I agree with Ruth, I want to say that we're all in this together, this is not meant in any way to grapple against one another, but it is really looking at the decision that will make the best sense moving forward.
It would be very tough to do those career classes here. I mean, we, we've already found that to be true, which is why we, we have a really strong regional program in New Horizons that we partner with and that we're part owner of. So we're very fortunate to have that, and with the changes that Mrs. Kardasko was talking about, we hope even more of our students, but we would not want to bring that back to just our school division alone, we wouldn't be able to get, to offer the students all of the offerings that they get through New Horizons and through the Governor's School.
Couldn't afford it.
Right.
In fact, we basically had to close down with, with the recession and so on, but we, we used to have an auto program, but it was so costly that, and it was duplicated down at, down at New Horizons. We used to have a building trades program that we had to close down because it was very costly, that we are offering things like that at New Horizons, and so we're fortunate to have that regional program. Maybe we're not so fortunate because we're the farthest away from it, but in truth, we can't, we couldn't afford, afford to do those classes.
I'm glad to see we're going back to utilizing New Horizons, because we, we'd gotten away from New Horizons. I was one of the first classes when they built the campus, and, and it was a good program then, and we did offer, you know, a lot of programs back in the 70s, the late 70s, in Lafayette, as far as, you know, and then, and then New Horizon opened up in 78, and that was first class in 78, so we utilized it pretty good then, and then kind of got away from it. But getting back to the, to the school itself, the, the fourth middle school, Dr., I can understand, you know, you're, you're basically talking about a, a shell where we can take classrooms and, and move them around to, to enlarge and all that with, with having some movable walls, and it sounds like we're, we're building the school to more of the SOLs than to anything else, because of the, the, catch me if I'm...
If I led you to believe that, let me try it again.
Okay.
Because that's not exactly what I meant.